Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, 6:30 in the McCallum Hearing Room at the Town House. First order of business is interviews for volunteer appointments. Susan Byer. Hi, Susan, would you mind stepping forward, coming up to the table with the microphones? Welcome, we always appreciate volunteers stepping forward and looking to serve the town. If you could just give us a little bit of background on yourself and why you chose at this time to step forward, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I'm not used to talking to a microphone.
Yes.
Well, I've lived in Southborough for 40 years. I just recently retired. And I found that being retired is nice, but I do have a lot of time on my hands. So I figured that, you know, I would like to volunteer and give something back to the town that I've lived in for a long time. And I worked, I'm a registered nurse and I've worked at Lenhamor's Hospital in Natick for 42 years. And I still work there per diem. And I'm just interested in a lot of things. I love sports. And I love people and I love helping people. And I love to read and, you know.
Wonderful. Thank you. And again, thank you for stepping forward and you clearly must love people, being a nurse for as long as you've been a nurse for. So on your application, you had listed a variety of things. I know we have some openings in some of those things that you had listed. I know our Youth Commission is one that has a member and I think someone with your background would be perfectly suited for that, as well as the Disabilities has an opening as well. I thank you for stepping forward. I will open it up to the board to ask you some questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shea.
I guess the only question I really had was, again, you had expressed an interest in many of the committees and if you had any preference of one over the other or, you know, leaning or preference.
Well, no, not really. You know, being a nurse, I guess I kind of think of, you know, the elderly and, you know, the disabled and things like that, but I'm pretty much open to anything that you have.
How many positions do we have available on the ones that Susan has checked off? Do you know?
I believe Youth and Family Services has one.
Yes.
The ADA, I'm not sure. We can look that up. Conservation has one. Scholarship, I believe, has a couple. And the Council on Aging is just an alternate position.
So we have two applicants interested in Conservation, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And there's one opening?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And ma'am, you mentioned Education, Elderly, Health, Library and Youth, as were the other ones, Celebrations? I'm actually, what is Celebrations? We should do that one more often.
Not quite sure what that one is.
Yeah. No, I too welcome you to volunteering for the town. I think it's a wonderful thing. I would love to see you on any of, if we have available positions and, you know, folks who are ready, willing, and able to volunteer for their town, I say we, all the above. My only one thought was there were two people looking for the one spot on Conservation. That's my only thought on that particular one. So, but other than that, I don't have any questions for you, I just thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Look forward to, I would look forward to making a motion on any available ones, I guess, save Conservation at this point because I haven't heard from the other applicant.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Byer, for stepping forward. Have you attended any of the meetings of any of the interests that you have identified? Have you been down to the Council on Aging?
No, I haven't. I haven't, I-
Are you familiar with any of the programs, Youth and Family Services, Council on Aging, the commitment?
No. I have to say, I've been very deficient in that department.
No, that's fine. I mean, you come with a great background and I personally think you'd be a real asset on Youth and Family Services and the Council on Aging, assisting them. Again, thank you for coming before us this evening. It's wonderful to have someone with interest. Thank you.
Thank you. May I suggest to the board that we bring Ms. Watson forward and speak to her and then maybe-
Sure.
Decide, you know, based on, Ms. Watson, I'm assuming that you're her? Hi, come step forward, please, again, and same thing to you, thank you for stepping forward. It's always a pleasure when new people step forward, you know, to serve the town, so thank you. I know on your form you had checked off Conservation or Personnel. If you could, again, just give a little bit of background to yourself and your interests. Thank you.
Yeah, so Judith Watson, I'm obviously not from around here originally. You can tell from the accent, but I've been living in Southborough for just over 10 years. But when I was in full-term employment, full-time employment, I was commuting either to the North Shore or the South Shore or down to Rhode Island, so I really felt I didn't have enough time to commit to anything in the local area. I'm no longer doing a full-time role, so I felt this was, this was the, you know, the coming year was a good opportunity to get more involved in the community. I put down Conservation as my preferred board. Conservation, the environment, is one of my three kind of main philanthropic areas, the other being food and then kind of children and medical aspects. I'm a member of the AMC, the Appalachian Mountain Club, very active in that. As is my husband, I'm a member of the Trustees of Reservation. So it's very much a kind of a personal interest area as well. And as I explored the opportunities for the boards, it became very clear that for me, that was a good match. Totally recognized that I don't know very much about the technical side of it, although I did have the opportunity to meet with Melissa Danza last week and she explained a little bit about the statutes that are related to it and the day-to-day workings of the commission. And I've been invited to the commission meeting on the 3rd of January as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for stepping forward. After meeting with Melissa and kind of getting a little bit of an idea of what the commission does, it's still, and obviously with joining any committee or commission for either one of you, there's a learning curve that goes along with it, you know? So no one expects you to come in and up to speed, you know, your first meeting. There is a learning curve with anything else, you know? So, but nothing that Melissa and you discussed deterred you in any way?
No, not at all. I mean, it seemed to be a very, you know, one, a very interesting area, but also there seemed to be some good support in terms of the Massachusetts kind of body and some of the programs that they run, the seminars that they run, the online webinars that they run. So, yeah, if she filled me in, I kind of, yeah, I can, you know, hopefully come up to speed fairly quickly on that side.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board? Mr. Shea.
Does your work background relate in all to any of the work that the Conservation Commission does?
No, not really. My background is primarily in food retailing and a little bit in healthcare, but my, that's what I call my functional background, but a lot of the roles I've had have been around, you know, business planning, process improvement, cost management. So I think some of that, some of those, you know, experiences and skills are probably, you know, hopefully somewhat portable to, you know, an organization or to a commission that's clearly very, where compliance is very key to how they operate and what they're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kalenda.
Just quickly, you're welcome. What do you do for the Appalachian Mountain Club and Trustees of the Reservations? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
The Trustees, I do some volunteering, but I also, you know, make use of their locations. The Appalachian Mountain Club, I, at the moment, I'm doing mainly, just, I'm participating. I do a lot of hiking with them, but also next year, because I have more time available, I'm gonna take on their leadership program as well, so I can be a fully fledged hiking leader.
Okay. We also have a Trails Committee, so you know-
I did see that, yes.
Do we have openings on Personnel Board?
You do, but it's not your appointment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry, it's the moderator's appointment, so.
Yeah, okay. So if you, if that is of interest, I don't know if this has gone to Mr. Semino?
It has.
All right, good, okay. No other questions. Thank you for volunteering.
Mrs. Faniff.
Again, I'm not gonna repeat it, but I will, thank you. Have you attended any other meetings? Have you been to any of the Conservation Commission meetings?
No, I think Melissa's explained that they got my application just after the December meeting. So the next available meeting is the January meeting and she has asked me to attend that meeting.
Melissa identified the commitment to you. You're aware that they require a quorum and a lot of their meetings are posted and are time-sensitive and you have the availability to meet those commitments?
I have looked at the schedule and I have no, I have one conflict in July, but all the other meetings, I don't have any conflicts right now.
And the trustees, are you involved in any of the land in Southborough that Sudbury Valley has stewardship over? Are you part of trustees?
Not in a formal way. I, you know, I visit Chestnut Hill balm quite frequently.
The reason I ask that, I would hate to think that you'd have to recuse yourself if we are in the process of monitoring the town land and you're sitting in a committee.
Right. No, no. If I do volunteering with the trustees, it's for their family social gatherings rather than for anything on their more formal agenda.
Thank you.
All right. I will just add that Conservation, multiple times, has said being down one member has created a hardship for them for quorums, so I think it's, if we can appoint somebody, in my opinion, that will certainly help them coming into the new year with everything that they're facing. And based on that.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that we appoint Ms. Watson to the Conservation Commission with the term ending 6/30/21.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. And you'll get a letter and you can go and get sworn in with the town clerk, telling you when, and then you will be set to attend the meeting in January.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you for volunteering.
Happy holidays.
All right. Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Byer, so again, is there, you don't really have a preference based on what you had listed? We still have, the Council on Aging has an alternate position available. The ADA, Youth Commission, I know Youth Commission's a very active commission, there's a lot of things going on with them. Do you have a preference or would you just leave it to the board to place you where?
Well, or all the above.
Or all of the above, yeah, absolutely. You could pitch on all of them.
Well, that's why, you know, if there are openings, as I said, if you'd like to be on multiple boards-
Maybe I should just try one at a time.
I'm all in favor, but if you want to try one to start with, if you had a preference of those, you know, it's up to you.
Oh, okay. Well, I think probably the, you said that there was one for the elderly and-
There's an alternate position.
Yeah, okay. And then what was the other one was?
Youth and Family Services.
That sounds wonderful.
Because they have a need, so that would be my preference.
And would the alternate position be less time-consuming since it's an alternate or do the alternates go to every meeting?
They don't have to attend every meeting, most tend to. I mean, they have a seat at the table, but is, you know, they're an alternate, so, and they meet once a month.
I think you'll enjoy both.
Okay.
I would love to see on both, but, yeah, I would love to see on both if you're interested in-
I agree.
But obviously, if you'd like to start with one, we don't want to twist it on-
Let me try the first one and see how it works.
I mean, the Council on Aging meetings, it's once a month, it's the first Friday morning of the month. They just kind of discuss all the good programs and all of the good things that are going on. It's about, just over an hour meeting. I think it starts at eight in the morning, they're done usually by nine, nine-thirty at the latest. Maybe if you're not comfortable doing two, maybe you could attend the next meeting even and just kind of get an idea if that's something that you might, might fit into your schedule as well. So, all right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is to appoint Ms. Byer's to Youth, the Youth Commission, term ending 6/30/21. All in favor? Aye. As well, thank you again. You'll also receive a letter and you can get sworn in with the town clerk.
Okay. Thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, interview for Veterans Agent Position. Mr. Bucy? He is not here at the moment, so we'll move on to Mr. Sterns. Sir, please step forward.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
If you could just kind of give us a little bit of background on yourself and what you're currently doing. I know that Mr. Wilson highly recommended you, so the floor is yours.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson's a great guy. I mean, I've known John for about 12 years and it's difficult for me because such a vibrant man, so. But my background is I went into the military right after high school. I graduated high school and said goodbye to my girlfriend and the next day I was in basic training. Haven't seen her since. So, she probably doesn't want to see me. Hopefully I won't run into her anywhere. But no, it was a great career. I spent a career in the military. I was stationed with the Air Force all over the world. I was at Pope, my first assignment, and that was with the 82nd Airborne. From there, I went to Greece for four years and from Greece I went to Andrews. Andrews, I went to Turkey, Turkey, to Washington State, so it's, I got around a little bit. And a couple wars in between, Desert Storm, Desert Shield. And I had an assignment to Panama and I could retire or I could go to Panama. And I was dating, again, here we go with the girl stories, but I was dating a lady at the time and she says, "Well, when do we leave?" I said, "We don't, the Air Force didn't invite you." They only invited me to go to Panama. So I ultimately refused the assignment and I retired. When I got out of the Air Force, then I went to a position as a distribution manager for a dental company, a startup dental company. It was wholesale, never done it before, but it was something that excited me and I don't know why wholesale would excite me, but it did. And we ended up selling the company for $72 million over a period of, we had the company for about 12 years. I was not a partner. I did not share in that. I got severance. So, but from there, I answered an ad for the Veterans Agent Director Position in Hudson. Never thinking I would get it, but I applied and I did get the position and I've been there for going on 15 years. So it's been a wonderful position for me and my family because I get to actually stay connected to the military. And I understand there's some connection to the military on this board as well. Your reputations precede you, so, in a good way, obviously. But no, it's been a great career and I've been able to develop some programs through my position and we've been able to help quite a lot of people and quite a lot of people. And the most, I guess the most current, recent thing that concerns me is opioids, like it concerns everyone. And that's something we're working on with the Coalition, with the state senators and Representative Dykma, you know, I've been working with her on certain things, even though she's not in, my representative in Hudson is Kate Hogan, but Representative Dykma and I get together on certain things as well, which I understand she's the state rep, or the representative for this town, so. That's it, pretty much.
Well, first, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It's greatly appreciated.
I appreciate that.
I only have one question for you, actually. Well, I might go into two, but being the Veterans Agent in Hudson, how do you see the time, how would you correlate your time between the two? I mean, obviously you don't want to cause a conflict with either, and I know the veterans' position here isn't a full-time position, so I can't imagine it would be an issue, but how would you envision being able to do both and serve both towns at the same time?
Well, even though it's a part-time position, that's a great question, but even though it's a part-time position, I still feel it would be a full-time position. And you're actually getting a full-time Veterans Officer, but considering it be part-time as far as the legalities of it. How I would handle somebody, for an example, coming in during the day and saying, "Okay, I need to talk to the Veterans Officer." I could either have them, I could meet them after work, I could meet them on Saturday. I meet all times of day and night with my veterans, so not, every veteran is not retired. A lot of veterans are working, so what happens there? You can't actually set a time on when a veteran is in need. A veteran comes in at five o'clock on Friday afternoons lots. Doesn't mean my day ends. You know, if they need something, then we continue and we make sure it happens. Because it has happened, it has happened where I've had an individual that has become homeless on Friday afternoon. What do you do? I mean, you can't leave them sit there outside the door saying, "Okay, I'm homeless." That's why we're here. That's our position. That's why the state allows us to do this job, so that we can help people and help the ones that need it the most, so.
That is a great answer. Thank you. And I as well know it's not a part-time position. I did not mean to make light of it.
No, you didn't.
You know, anything with our veterans and their veterans' needs, and has been the history in this town, you know, whatever needs to be done or whatever, the town has been very supportive of that and our veteran needs. We've been fortunate. We've had some wonderful veterans' agents, you know, that have been very helpful and very wonderful to our veterans in town. So thank you, thank you for that mindset, you know, always being there for our veterans. For me, that's really important and it's what I was looking for, so thank you.
Thank you for the work that you've done with veterans over the years, too. I appreciate that.
And I open it to the board. Mrs. Faniff.
Thank you for showing up this evening.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I want to say I appreciate everything that you've done for our agent as of today. You've been of help to him, he appreciates that, and we appreciate that as a community as well. I'm familiar with the service and I know you make house calls and I've know, I have called you myself for assistance for a veteran in town at one time. And you come more than qualified. It's with what you have demonstrated and what John states about you, you're probably the first that I have appointed. Actually, before John was appointed, I was a Veterans Agent for three weeks because of my paperwork, but-
Between Irene and John.
And I was very, right, and I was very experienced, lucky to know one ever called, but I have no questions for you other than thank you and thank you for what you've done for the residents in town that most people aren't familiar with and thank you for assisting John over the last few months as well.
John's a pleasure, like I said. I've known him for a long time and I know it's difficult for him and one of the things we discussed was when you're ready to do whatever you want to do, you do it. That's your decision, so.
Assistant Sergeant Sterns, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And all I needed to hear was that you come highly recommended from John Wilson, that's enough for me. And plus, everything I've seen on your profile is exceptional and I absolutely look forward to seeing you serve our veterans in our town. What would be your priorities? What would you look, as you said opioids, but what would your kind of top priorities be for service that you would want to bring to the veterans in Southborough?
Well, I think there are a lot of veterans that don't really know exactly what we have. Even though John's put it out there and he's done a great job with it, you have veterans coming in every day, so there may be a veteran that's just new to town or somebody that's moved from another community into town and they aren't aware of it. So I think that working with the Council on Aging and doing some media coverage, getting out there, and what I did when I first got to Hudson was, and they asked me a similar question, "How are you going to be known to the veterans? Knock on doors." I mean, not specifically, but, you know, go to the places where the veterans are. Bring the veterans into places where they need to be. We do a Veterans Talk in Hudson now and sometimes I'm there, sometimes I'm not, because sometimes they don't want me there, because they want to be able to talk, you know? That's their forum and we don't allow anybody to, you know, interrupt that forum, including myself. And sometimes I'm there and sometimes I'm not. So, you know, those are good things, that everything, it allows them and it allows the people to, you know, express themselves in a way that I don't think they would if there was a government official there. So as far as a priority for town here, John has set a high bar, so, I mean, he's done a good job here. There's not a lot that I can do to, you know, increase that visibility, I don't think, but I'll do whatever I can. And I think maybe the website and getting some Facebook coverage, that type of thing to our younger veterans, so they're aware, might be an option.
I think that's a great idea, because there are younger veterans, too, that, you know, those of us who march in the parades, they're generally, we're getting older and there's some younger veterans. We'd love to see more participation in the Veterans Day, Memorial Day, you know, parades, more veterans march with us, more veterans that can be recognized by their fellow residents for the service they've given to their country. So the more that you can do to make those options available and known to them, I think would be wonderful. And again, thank you for your service to our country and your pending service to the town of Southborough.
And it's kind of a double-edged sword, because, you know, as far as our benefits go, we're great on providing benefits, more so than we've ever been, and the best state in the entire country. On the other side of it, all them benefits combined, the education, the employment, all of those good benefits, they are actually working and the veterans, the younger veterans are actually employing them and skills through, you know, their education, things like that. So they don't have the time to march in the parade, so that's the other side of the sword. But community involvement is important, like these young ladies tonight came up here and they're volunteering. And that's another thing I want to see, is volunteers. I have a one-star general volunteering in my office right now in Hudson. It's great. He's like a bulldog, you know? He goes out there and he makes things happen and stuff, things that I couldn't do, because, you know, he has the fortitude to actually get out there and do some things that I wouldn't be as comfortable doing, but he says, "Hey, I'm General Stone, so I need this." Like he's always done, probably, so, I mean, it's good, it's all good, but I thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea, anything?
Again, thank you for your service to our country, to your continued service to the veterans, and also very grateful for your assistance to Mr. Wilson. I think that we're in a position where, you know, our town is, you know, very fortunate to have continued excellent service in this position. The only question I had, Ms. Braccio had asked earlier and I thought you gave an excellent answer to it, so thank you for stepping up. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
All right. Do we have a motion to appoint Brian Sterns to the Veteran Agent Position, term 6/30/19?
Madam Chair, heartily moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Town Administrators Report. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of updates on two, two things this evening. Just want to pull one of them up on my computer. So just to update the board, the first one is update the board on an issue that I think you probably saw that in the newspapers regarding Bill's liquors. There was an underage violation as a result of the police department's annual alcohol compliance check. They did have one of their clerks who sold to an underage minor. The police chief has been working with the owner or the license holder and getting some information as to next steps from them. We are also, I'll be- We are also, I'll be reaching out to them on behalf of the Board to also get information from them and provide those answers to the Board. And then the Board can determine if they feel that any next step should be taken regarding the license, to have the license holder in for a discussion at that point. So, more information will be forthcoming on that. The other issue that's listed on the agenda regarding RightWay Auto, which is a Class II license. There's some issues of compliance with the conditions of their Class II license. The Police Department did a, did a check recently on Monday, December 10th. And it looks like the sign they have posted for their hours exceed the hours that are allowed by the license. Also, they had about 22 vehicles for sale with signs on them for sale down there. The permit allows for 14. Again, I'm also going to be sending them notice as to, you know, checking, that we are checking on their license. And we'd like to understand these issues and let us know what's going to, what their actions are going to be moving forward with them. I'll bring that information back to the Board, and we can have a conversation as to whether or not there are further steps that the Board would like to take. The only other item that I had is talking about a meeting for the budget. We had talked about doing a separate and distinct meeting outside of a regular meeting schedule. The regular meeting schedules for January are January 2nd and 15th. I was taking a look at potentially doing during the off week, the Tuesday. The Chair has indicated that she would not be available on the Tuesday. She said we could go on without her. I said that was unacceptable, especially for this discussion. And so, we were looking at January 10th to do that meeting. I think all of you have responded back that you would be available for that discussion, and that's excellent. Mr. Ballantyne and I will present to you the recommended budget. There has been a request from Advisory to attend that meeting, but that the meeting be as a joint meeting. So that Advisory is able to actively participate and ask questions. And, and again, make it a true joint meeting between the two Boards regarding the budget. I want to, before that is consummated, so to speak, with Advisory, I just wanted to make sure that that was kosher with the Board. I know you really haven't had a chance to see the budget. Meet, you know, Departments are going to be invited to the meeting, so that if there are any particular questions or concerns, or if they want to have conversations, that they can do that as well. So, I'll kind of put that on the table for your thoughts as to whether you'd like this to be, you know, a true joint meeting, whether you just simply want to invite Advisory. I'll leave it up to you.
I personally would prefer to invite Advisory. Advisory has had the opportunity to have the Departments come before them and ask questions and have their discussions. We have not at this point. My understanding was, that was the intent of that meeting with us, was to be able to go through the budget and ask the Department questions. I would prefer, myself, and obviously, I'm, it's up to the Board. I would prefer that they can be invited, but I would prefer this not be a joint meeting. If they would like a joint meeting with a roundtable between all of us, that's fine. We can set another date for that if need be. But for me, this was an information meeting. It was to be able to ask the questions that we had to ask. That's just my thoughts. Anyone else?
I think I agree with you. I think, I mean, obviously, by inviting Advisory, they're going to have to post, so they'll be in session here anyways. But I think that the approach that you had outlined would be best. And again, you know, obviously, we're looking at a year where Annual Town Meeting is earlier. The whole process got moved forward. Hopefully, weather will cooperate, and we don't have snow cancellations for a lot of meetings. So, hopefully, again, if it, if a next step from that meeting that we do have on the 10th is a joint meeting, I think that would be the way to go. But let's start with it, because our meeting first with Advisory invited.
Time is of the essence, so I agree.
Mrs. Faniff?
I agree that the meeting will be our meeting. However, I do not want to have a meeting that hasn't been vetted, and the parties that are in the room understand what the budget, where the budget is that evening that we're discussing, and why we're discussing that budget. But there's conversations with...
I think that's imperative, yeah. So, currently, right now, the Finance Director and I have sent out suggested revisions to a number of budgets and some new bottom lines. That I will say the Departments are being very collaborative in getting to those new bottom lines and everything and that. So, we'll be able to bring you in a recommended budget, which will meet the guidelines set out by the Board. I think it's important that the Board understand what you're doing, how you're doing it, and what you, you know, what makes up this budget before you pass it on to Advisory for them to opine on. So, I think it's important to have everybody in the room. But it sounds like the Board wants to ensure that it's whatever your recommendation is that leaves, then it goes to Advisory, then Advisory has to provide their recommendation.
But I want to take it one step further. If the Department Heads or any Commission Committee do not agree with the presentation that we're going to have, then I think it's only fair that we request that they put in in writing to us, two days before that meeting, as to why they don't agree with it.
We will understand, going into the meeting, we can identify where we are. Because obviously, like I said, the elected Boards, Committees, you know, Positions, they can agree to disagree.
But they should put it...
Absolutely.
As a committee, not as individuals speaking to this Board. That what their committee or Commission feels.
We'll be able to identify those outliers at that time.
Because we're only going to go in circles if we don't pin it down.
I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. All right. Consent Agenda. I'm asking that we hold Item B, excuse me, and Item C for discussion. Are there any other holds?
Are we holding E based on what Mr. Purple said about the Class II license?
No, those will be, no, so that, what I said does not affect the renewals, but that may affect...
Okay.
Further discussion about the license, but not the renewal itself.
Actually, could we do A separately, just so...
Sure.
Those, one of the meeting minutes that I wanted to make one comment on.
So, D, E, and F. Do I have a motion to assign Open Meeting Law Complaint from Jenny Kramer dated 12/4/18 to Town Council? Annual Renewals of Alcohol Class II in Common Virtual License? I can't say that. Screwed up every time, sorry. Licenses for 2019 per attached list and approve the 2018-2019 winter parking ban.
So moved.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go back to approval of meeting minutes, January 25th, 2017, Executive Session. August 1st, 2017, Executive Session. October 15th, 2018. October 7th, 2018. October 26th, 2018. December 4th, 2018. And December 11th, 2018, open and Executive Session.
So, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I could do this real quick and then turn it over to Mr. Shea. So, Mrs. Faniff has submitted comments on three sets of minutes. The first is October 15th, 2018. There is, in the third paragraph, deletion of the word "any" in the third line, which was actually an extra word that shouldn't be there. In the November 26th, 2018 minutes. The date was listed incorrectly. I believe it was 2017, is now corrected at 2018. And in the December 11th, 2018 minutes, the time of 6:30 was added in the heading. And then also in the first paragraph, the line where Mrs. Brascio thanked Mr. Hegarty for discussing this issue previously. It was also inserted, thanked Mr. Hegarty, who was present, for discussing the issue previously. So, those three comments were submitted by Mrs. Faniff. And I think that, in my opinion, they correct the deficiencies that existed.
Thank you. Mr. Shea?
So, on the December 4th minutes, so I had recused myself from the tail end of that meeting. And was actually, had gone off, signed some documents that we had. I was on my way back here and heard part of the discussion that was going on. And one of the things that I did hear towards the very end of one of the public comment session was that the Board was going into recess. And I didn't see that in the minutes. I went back on the tape, and I think if we could add, prior to the last sentence, Mr. Kalenda ended public comment. Just add the phrase, "the Board," and went into recess. I think that would, again, coincide, it's consistent with what I heard on my way back here into the room, and I think what the video that I saw reflects as well.
I agree. I saw the same. Any other edits?
Could you read the last, the last paragraph that you're stating, Mr. Shea?
So, it's from the December 4th. And it's... And it's...
It's the last page.
Yeah, last page, page seven, the last sentence. I would insert before the last sentence, the Board entered into recess. And then Mr. Kalenda ended public comment.
But he also adjourned the meeting.
That's the next sec, that's already in there.
All right, so you're leaving that in there, you're not removing it?
I'm not deleting that at all.
I think Mr. Shea's change is just at the end of that last full paragraph. So, just, so just for, just for my sake, to make the change, you want the issue of going into recess prior to ending public comment, not after?
I did not, on the video, and I did not recall hearing, that public comment was called to an end prior to going into recess. I heard, the Board is going into recess. At that point, the video ended, I think appropriately. Terry heard recess, killed the microphone, and then other comments I heard after that, but...
So, is it enough to say that the Board went into recess and that it should not have Mr. Kalenda ended public comment?
That's what he said. He went into recess, and I, if you looked at me, I looked at him and said, adjourned. And he did, and then I seconded it. The tape had already been shut off, because we checked with Terry at that time. The volume had been shut off.
So, we're in...
So, my question is, do we keep this?
Yeah. The question is, do we want to keep ended public comment or just say went into recess?
Does recess.
Yep.
Yes.
Just keep, okay.
Edit, just recess, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion, meeting minutes as read amended?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Closing of the warrant. Mr. Purple?
Yes. So, the warrant has been an extremely fluid process. In addition to what you have in your packet as the draft warrant, I did receive some additional things today. And I just wanted to note them. There was a placeholder requested by Planning to have the town, have Southborough designated as a tree city. There's, there's some information that they'll provide in terms of the criteria. And it appears from a quick review from the Town Planner that we may be doing a lot of what is already required as a criteria. I can't tell you about the benefits. This came in late this afternoon, but I think that it's worthy of a placeholder. Mr. Hegarty clarified, he had two articles that was in, one regarding electioneering being prohibited. He was changing the distance for the purpose of petitioning or selecting signatures. And he had one, had a placeholder in for that, as well as prohibiting meetings on Election Day or when town offices are closed due to weather or other emergency. He broke out the electioneering piece to address regular elections as well as early voting. So, he had, so now, so he has three placeholders. There was an email that was received from Claire Reynolds regarding the Town of Southborough considering voting to implement a meals tax. This is an issue, I think, that was previously discussed a number of years ago. I don't think that it received any traction at that point, although our financial situation has changed a little bit. And I believe that she's putting that back on the table. I don't know whether or not the Board would like to put a placeholder for that, at least for discussion purposes. I see mixed reviews.
I do not.
For discussion purposes, I would include, I would request a placeholder.
Okay, so we can put a placeholder on?
Wouldn't mind hearing from, I think we've heard from two that want to even have it for discussion, one that doesn't want it. I don't know if Mrs. Faniff has a point or Mr. Shiffrin.
I want a discussion, but doesn't it require a public hearing?
I'm not sure if it's, I mean, we should have...
I mean, I was party to the, the last time we discussed it. I believe we advertised, and I'm not sure if it was a public hearing that was required. So, I think we need to find out if we need a hearing before we move forward on that. And as far as the warrant in general, has anybody identified what does require public hearings before any Boards, any of these articles?
Once we close the warrant, I can, I can get a better handle on that. I'm trying to get a handle on what goes, what goes in and what placeholders we have, so that we don't need to reopen the warrant.
Citizens petitions require public hearings.
We will need to have all the citizen petitioners in. And now it's determining if there's anything that is zoning, that is going to require Planning Board process. So, I'll be taking a look at that beginning tomorrow. There was an additional citizens petition dropped off this afternoon, the first. And I apologize, because I do not have, there were four of them that had a variety of signatures. I believe that Karen Hanlon was the, was the first signature. It's requiring the Board of Selectmen and School Committee to adopt a policy on prohibited conduct. It appears to be a, what I would call a red flag policy on fraud, identifying fraud, protecting against fraud and theft. Again, that's, was submitted as a citizen petition. I don't know that the Clerk has certified this yet, but I'm putting a hold on it. And then there was another citizen petition that was submitted. Patricia Burns Fiori is the first signature, asking Town Meeting to vote to request the Selectmen to engage in discussions with nonprofits about pilot amounts for, to cover the town's cost of providing services for them. So, I will provide you, again, these came in this afternoon, so I'll provide you more information and formally place them in the warrant once signatures have been certified. But this is the total of what I have in addition to what is already in the warrant. If all placeholders are full, we're looking at close to 50 articles.
Mr. Shiffrin, did you have thoughts on the, moving the meals tax forward or not forward for discussion?
Moving it, and the idea.
Yeah. Okay.
The idea is, I'd weigh them in there, but, no. I'd weigh them in there, from the easy.
Yeah. I would certainly be interested in hearing from them and their reasoning behind it as well. So, okay.
That's the totality that I have. So, the, the, the issue before the Board is the closing of the warrant as presented for the March 23rd, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
I have a follow-up question, I'm sorry.
No, go.
On the pilot recommendation for the Pilot Committee? I know it's a warrant article, but there's no, there's no reason why this Board today couldn't activate that committee and invite three Residents. Expand it, as we had in the past, to review it, to start that process now.
You could. I mean, there is a Pilot Committee.
I'm on it.
Yes. There is, there is a committee to do that. I mean, the language, and it's, you know, would be something the Town Council would need to opine on, but it would seem that the language is a non-binding resolution, which is more to give the flavor of Town Meeting to the Board for further action.
No, I understand, it still can go to Town Meeting, but I'm saying, today, we could solicit three Citizens, if we choose, or more, and say, get busy, review what we did. It's been reviewed once already. And improve on it. And have the discussions. And still move forward with that if they, since it is a petition. But we could be proactive.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that, Mrs. Faniff.
So I suggest maybe we put feelers out there that we're looking for volunteers.
Thoughts from the rest of the board on that?
Sounds like a good idea.
Excellent, thank you. Okay.
Just, one question I had. So we had also received correspondence earlier today relative to the 5G network. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, there already is a placeholder article in the warrant to, in case that, any bylaw change or anything comes with respect to that, we're covered, we have a placeholder for that.
Yes, yeah, that, that's correct. And just to, thank you for, for reminding me, I'd almost forgotten that. Ms. Davis, who has been a tireless advocate in this regard, had sent the board something earlier today, and, and requesting that the board kind of do an emergency ordinance to try and address some of the changes that are coming legislatively for 5G and kind of limiting communities' ability to address the issue, or prohibit the issue, the, the rollout of 5G from the various companies. And ordinance is to city as bylaw is to town. And while a city council can pass an ordinance and can do those things and that, selectmen don't have that same authority, that's town meeting for the bylaw. So, but what I am doing, we do have an attorney that we've engaged to assist the town with our cable negotiations with our, with Verizon, Charter and Comcast. I'm going to reach out to the attorney, and, you know, you're a cable attorney, this is your bailiwick. How are you advising clients regarding the 5G? What are you suggesting be done, you know, to, for the communities to put themselves in the best situation that they can regarding the 5G? Is it similar to the discussion about recreational medical marijuana? Is it moratorium until these things are better understood? So I'll get some advice from, from council and see if there's a way to, to address this. Unless this, unless the board would like to pursue a different act.
No, I, I personally think that's the way to go. I'm, I'm not in a, ready now to advocate one way or the other on an article that would be put together, but just wanted to be sure that if something does come up, that we have a placeholder in the warrant to address it.
It does, it does. And, and the, and the MTC has addressed this issue, and they strongly suggested that we get a cable attorney to take a look at this issue, because it's really outside of the knowledge base of what we have.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, then. Do we have a motion for the closing of the warrant for March 23rd, 2019 annual town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Last item under consent, accept resignation of John H. Wilson from the Main Street Committee, Golf Course Committee, Trust Fund Committee, and Veteran Service, Aid Services Officer. I just wanted to add, and I wanted to give any members of the board as well, that wanted to, to thank John for his many, many years of service to this town. Thirty-two years as the moderator, eight years as the Veterans Agent, on top of all the other boards and committees he served, as well as serving our country. I just wanted to, to take a moment and to publicly thank him for all that he's done, and allow the board any comments or anything they may like to add as well.
Madam Chair, I would second those comments. John Wilson, Lieutenant Colonel Wilson is a, is a treasure to the town of Southborough. He is a local hero. He served his country with honor and distinction in Vietnam. And he leads our Veterans Parade at Veterans Day and Memorial Day observances with dignity and class every single year. And he is, as you said, volunteered on so many boards and committees. How many annual town meetings did he oversee as the town moderator? And again, did it with such grace and, and, and class. He is a wonderful part of our community and has, has been so for so many years. He is going to be missed on all of these boards and committees. I would like to vote in the negative to accepting his resignation, but out of respect for Colonel Wilson, I will, I will vote in the affirmative and unfortunately agree to accept his resignation from all of those committees. Again, just a, you know, a town treasure and, and I hope when, you know, people come across Mr. Wilson in the coming weeks and months and they see him and they too thank him, as with any veteran, sometimes it's just nice when they come up and say, "Thank you for your service." And, you know, no greater, you know, example of service to country and town than John Wilson.
Well said.
I'll just say, thank you for holding this. You know, obviously, we typically accept resignations under consent agenda, but Mr. Wilson's service was far more important than, you know, one of six items under consent agenda. I had the pleasure and the honor of serving with him on the Main Street Committee and had a great, great deal of respect for Mr. Wilson and was great thanks, will, for all he's done, will accept, photo, accept the resignation.
Okay.
I met John in 1971 when I moved to the town. John doesn't volunteer, he commits himself. And there's very few people that I've come across in this town that, in his commitment, he still remains a gentleman, and he treats everyone the same. And he is, he's a treasure, someone that we all could aspire to be like. And I hope that's in Southborough's future, to be more like John.
Very well said, Mrs. Faniff. Very well said. All right, do we have a motion as read?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful, thank you. Other matters properly before the board, discussion of intermunicipal agreement with Milis for EDC position. Mr. Purple?
Madam Chair, members of the board, in your packets, you have a, there's a draft intermunicipal agreement for an economic development planning services between the town of Milis and the town of Southborough. This is something that was, was discussed previously by the board in terms of the interest in exploring this option. This was something that was supported, I think, by EDC. We have a nineteen and a half hour position that, once vacated by the employee, had been very difficult to fill. We relied on planning agency services and had a great contract employee in the position until the planning agency decided the employee was too valuable and needed them back. Had been unable to, to fill the position after several advertisements. Currently have another contract employee who is filling in for the position at this time. And discussions have been had with the town of Milis. Town of Milis has a lot of contracted services for positions that we have employees for, such as conservation and planning and things of that nature. They do not have anything for economic development, they're looking to move in that direction. They went to town meeting to get funding for that position, and we've engaged in discussions on how to do that. The agreement that is in the packet, the, the final draft comment would assume the position held by the town of Southborough, so a forty-hour position held by the town with benefits, which twenty hours or half of the position, including half of the benefits, would be contracted out and the responsibility for the town of Milis. This has been reviewed by both our council and their council, and actually, their Board of Selectmen met the other evening and gave their approval for the document as presented. I did have a conversation with my counterpart in Milis this afternoon. I have had, there are some things, I think, on this side of the equation that need to be taken into consideration in terms of the discussions, and I brought him up to speed on those. The first being that obviously, we're entering into a, you know, our first difficult budget discussions, I think, probably in the last six or seven budgets. And so, even though we're going to be getting compensation back from Milis, we are going to have to carry the totality of a full position, which means an uptick in the budget that may not necessarily be there or may be identified for other uses. The second point is, in conversations with Personnel Board, the position currently is carried in Schedule C as a part-time position. I think there's general agreement that if we were to go along as identified in the IMA as written and carry it as a full-time position, that position would need to move into Schedule A. In order for that to happen, it would require town meeting approval in March, and then any approvals under the SAP then take effect on July 1st. So nothing could happen with this position until July 1st or after. Outlining those to the administrator in Milis, he indicated to me that he would be willing to have his board entertain, essentially flipping the script, so that Milis holds the position. And Milis then sells back twenty hours of services, along with half of the benefits, to Southborough. Therefore, our position could remain in Schedule C, because it will remain as a part-time position. There would be no impediment to us moving forward, you know, once the IMA was consummated, we could then advertise for the position. I think the one thing, the only thing that changes on this side of the equation in that scenario is that the town would be responsible for, you know, up to half, you know, no more than half of the benefits, depending on what benefits the employee took for health insurance and things of that nature. So I wanted to get the, I wanted to get some feedback from the board as to where you may be with this, and whether or not we should continue moving forward in some fashion, whether or not we should be reaching back out to CMRPC, to MAPC, to see if we can re-engage on contracted services, whether we should be advertising for another part-time employee. So, all of that is on the table, but I needed to get the feedback from the board before we move any further at this point.
Can I just ask how this can stay in Schedule C? Because it's going to bring it up to a twenty-hour position, and twenty hours, my understanding, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, twenty hours is considered full-time in the SAP?
If it was a ma, it's going to require benefits regardless. We need to, you know, nineteen and a half usually does not require us to elevate it to benefits. I think the twenty would still consider it to be kept in Schedule C, but I can check on that.
Okay.
I have a question. The individual will be considered a full-time employee regardless by two towns?
Full-time employee for the town of Milis.
Right, but we're obligated to pay our share to Milis.
That's correct.
What retirement system would this individual be in, since we're in Worcester County? Isn't that in Middlesex County?
It is in Middlesex.
So how does that work?
It'd be in Middlesex.
Do we know what the rates are?
For retirement?
The percentage? Are they both the same?
I'm not sure what their assessment is, but again, it's their, it's their employee. And, and I don't know if you're playing it down the road that at some point, if this person retires from this arrangement, then, and all future costs, OPEB, things of that nature are all borne equally by the communities based on the hours.
Right, so we still could have a percentage of the, any individual under that scenario. I mean, I want to record that I'm not in favor of hiring personnel that's going to require benefits. I don't think...
That's why we're having this discussion tonight, because I want to understand if this is something that stops here, or if this moves forward.
I would advertise again. I'd reach out to whoever you can reach out to, to see if we can fill this position under nineteen and a half hours. What are we currently filling the position with?
Claire Reynolds has been filling the position. We had done a sixty-day contracted services with a couple of extensions, those, those, that will expire as of January 2nd. And then at that point, I think I would seek direction from the board. That's why we're having this discussion now, how you'd like to proceed.
And the number of hours?
It's about ten hours a week.
Okay.
Ten hours a week, it's based on the same, basically the same arrangement that we had with CMRPC for the contracted services.
Okay.
Mr. Purple, what's the benefit, the benefited amount approximately?
Usually the number that Mr. Ballantyne, Ballantyne and I use for an employee, assuming that they're taking a family plan for health insurance, is about $20,000 a year.
To be half.
So to be half of that.
What is the EDC...
Worst-case scenario.
What is the EDC suggesting?
I think EDC, and I hate to speak for them, because other than the fact that they've been supportive of trying to do something like this IMA, I think they'd like to see some stability in the position. You know, we had stability with, you know, the previous employee, we had some stability with the relationship with CMRPC, and I think we would have gone along with that relationship, but, again, CMRPC decided they, they needed that employee back in their offices instead of having them out here doing our work. So, I, I haven't had an, an indication from EDC that they wouldn't like to continue pursuing this.
That they would or would not?
Would, would like to pursue this. I think this provides stability. If you're able to do a full-time position with benefits, that'll provide more stability. I think the only thing, and I will say this as a caveat, I think that this will help us in the potential three-to-five-year term, but as I started out my comments tonight, the town of Milis does a lot of things under contracted services. They have a planner, they don't have a planner on staff, they contract that out. They don't have a conservation agent on staff, they contract that out. I can see three to five years down the road that this person may morph into a full-time position in Milis to cover some of these services that they're now contracting out for.
I mean, I mean, it's, I think it's a creative idea. I mean, it's, something needs to happen, because it, it's not sustainable the way it's, it's been going for too long. And it's an incredibly important, important position that actually, I think, can save the town money. You know, sometimes, yes, you do have to invest in personnel in order to have committees like that be able to do their work and then identify opportunities for responsible economic growth in Southborough that can bring in revenue, you know. And having a partnership with another town, you're automatically learning from that other town as well, what that other town is doing, because the person's doing the same role in a couple of different places. So, I think it's, I think it's a neat idea. I completely am on board with Ms. Faniff, however, on, you know, I, I'm apprehensive about adding to, you know, personnel. We've, we've tried not to do that. But if there's not an option that we've been able to identify for quite some time, and, you know, this might be it, for a fairly low dollar amount, which could result in a, in a, you know, a, you know, some additional revenues to the town of Southborough that we otherwise don't have today, just be based on, you know, an experienced coordinator who can do those things for us. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd like to know what the EDC would recommend. I, I, I think we should continue to look down this path and see if it's workable and cost-effective to the town and actually produce some, help produce some revenues.
I mean, I'm happy to beat the bushes and to go back and, and advertise the position again at nineteen and a half hours to re-engage with MAPC and CMRPC and see if they do have services that they're willing to provide. Again, it's less hours than we have, you know, the nineteen and a half as an employee, roughly ten hours a week as a contracted service, but you're also getting the value of the planning coalition, the planning commission behind that employee, which I think provides, you know, added value. And I think the EDC would be the first one to say, "Yeah, we only got maybe ten hours a week out of the employee, but it was significant value that we got out of it, so it may, may have matched what we were getting in the nineteen and a half previously with an employee." So I'm happy to explore those options at the same time as finding out whether or not Milis was willing to approve those changes. So then you essentially have, you know, we can come back before this comes before you for any decision purposes, and I apologize for putting this all on the table before Mr. Shea, you got to speak. But at least then you'll know, the employee, you know, the advertisement did not get us anything of any significance that we could move forward with, and CMRPC or an MAPC either do or don't have something that they could work with us on, so you know what those options would be.
It'd only be six months, right? Initial six months? Initial six months? January to end of June?
Well, I, I think we'd, if we're going to go forward with either an employee, you know, it's longer than six months, and if we do an arrangement with CMRPC or MAPC, it'd be along the lines of what we had previously. It, it may make sense to do a short term just to make sure it works.
Well, I thought I saw on here, initial term of January one to June thirty.
It was an initial term just to make sure that something like this would work in here, and then we'd obviously have to talk about, but I, but I, I don't think you want to enter into something where you're jointly hiring somebody and then six months later, you know, getting rid of it. I think we'd want to be, talk about, you know, a successor agreement shortly into that term. You, you need to be fair to the person that you'd be bringing on board as well.
Mr. Shea?
Sorry.
No problem. So, I think I'm in favor of, you know, going down that path first, you know, beating the bushes again before we make this. And, but just to be clear, though, that this, this is something that would need to be voted by both town meetings, correct?
No.
Town meeting of Southborough.
No, this is the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Millis and the town of Southborough.
If-
But both town meetings would need to-
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
It's the jurisdictions of the, that was under the Municipal Modernization Act. This is something under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, it's not town meeting.
But if we approve it and leave it as it is with Southborough holding it-
If you approve it and leave it as it is, then you're correct. There are some issues in terms of, of the SAP-
Yep.
-that need to be adjusted in order to make, in order to allow this to happen.
So, our share of the cost of this would need to be included in the budget, though, correct?
That's correct.
So, that is theoretically something that could get cut out-
So, in a per, in a perfect, in a perfect world, it would be essentially the amount that you're carrying for the EDC position, give or take a couple thousand dollars, and then half of a, of a, of a position in the benefits budget. So, that would be, that would be what would need to, and that, those amounts are essentially there at this point in the budget. We do carry some additional positions because things change in the middle of the year for health insurance and that, so we do carry some additional positions. So, that, but that is something we need to give consideration to.
I also agree with, with going down this path and trying to find the best way. My concern is, we haven't finalized where we stand with the budget, and in certain, at the five, six, and seven, I think when we hit the six, there was still the potential for, to cut hours. So, I worry on adding a full-time position with benefits when the possibility is still there to cut hours somewhere else. I would certainly be interested in, in going down the path to beat the bush, to see, you know, if there's anything that we can do and then, you know, address this. We have, I think we have time before town meeting to do that. That's my thoughts. I know, Ms. Rosenbloom, you had a-
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
I just had a little commentary from the Personnel Board perspective, if I might, to give you a full picture. I know, Ms. Bracio, you were at our last meeting for this discussion. My name is Betsy Rosenbloom. I'm the Chair of the Personnel Board, and I have been authorized by a vote of my board to speak on this and other matters under the rubric of the dialogue that we're hoping to have with you about how personnel things are handled. So, just a couple of things. Full-time is defined in the SAP as twenty or more hours, if that was a question. This matter first came to Personnel Board's attention. Mr. Purple mentioned it. We have an item on our agenda modeled after your agenda, Personnel Director's Report, and he mentioned this IMA and MOU coming forward that he was working on in November, but it was not on our agenda, so I didn't encourage, really couldn't allow a discussion of it. However, I did say to him at the time that if we understood what he was saying, it would be a full-time position, and it would need to come before the Personnel Board for approval, and encouraged him to come sooner rather than later before too much of your time and town council resources were spent on something that would need to come before our board. And it was my understanding that he nodded in agreement, but we didn't really have a discussion, so it wouldn't be fair for me to say what he was thinking at that time. Subsequently, I, I meet with Mr. Purple and Ms. Hale every month to, my continuing effort to coordinate and, and cooperate on matters, and Mr. Purple gave me a letter, memo, a two-page memo on the background of the EDC position. However, there was no request coming forward. We put it on our agenda, but there was not a request. And one other piece of information, when Mr. Purple came before us originally in November, he said, after explaining the negotiations, he said, "So, the Personnel Board may wish to think about making this a full-time position at some point in the future." And I explained to him, at least in my fifteen months on the board, the board didn't of its own suaspekte just decide to look at a position and make it full-time. We would respond to a request that came before us. And I cited the example of a group that was before us from the COA that day, asking us to take an action with respect to a position. So, I made my position clear that we would expect a formal request, written request as we do of every other proponent of a position, to come before the board. We didn't get a request. I noticed it as a request at our December meeting. Mr. Purple came again. We appreciated his input. He told us last week, our meeting was on Wednesday, the twelfth, that he had not heard from his counterpart in Millis for a couple of weeks, did not know the status of the position, was not asking for our approval because he did not know if this was going to go through. And basically, there wasn't anything to bring us. My board made it clear at that time that whether you look at this as a Section Three new position or a Section Four reclassification, the road to establishing this goes through the Personnel Board. Mr. Purple, outside of the meeting, when we were having our pre-meeting, expressed the opinion to me that he expressed this evening, that this is the BOs decision. So, I would state on behalf of the Personnel Board, and I have been authorized by my board to do so, it's the position of our board. We're not experts on the IMA, but I am an attorney, and I looked at the material Mr. Purple supplied to me. Also, Mr. Rubenstein, who sits on the board and was at your last meeting, is a retired labor attorney of many years' experience. He also looked at the IMA. And it is our considered opinion that the IMA gives your board full authority to enter into agreements regarding positions that have been established, not to enter into an agreement for a position that has not yet been established. So, sorry, I'm so lengthy. I, I didn't know what Mr. Purple was going to say. I assumed it was going to mirror what we heard last week. Obviously, these things move along quickly, so I heard some different things than I heard at my meeting last week, so I wanted to give you the fullest possible picture. Where I'm at on this, and I think it was the sense of the board, but again, we didn't have a request before us, so we didn't have a full discussion, we didn't have a vote. It's the sense of the board that this is a Section Three or a Section Four. It needs approval in any case. And what I heard Mr. Purple say tonight is that it requires town meeting approval, but I just wanted to clarify, it doesn't get to town meeting on a vote whether or not a position should be established or a position reclassified unless the Personnel Board votes to recommend that to town meeting. So, the road goes through Personnel Board, and that's how it goes. We're the ones who propose changes to the SAP to town meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry that was so long. Are there any questions for the, on the Personnel Board perspective? Not for me?
Okay.
And the last comment Mr. Purple did make to us was that he would speak with his counterpart in Millis when he could contact him, perhaps reverse the situation so that it was carried by Millis, and everybody on the board nodded in assent because that obviously, if Millis doesn't have a Personnel Board and the same SAP structure, a lot less issues to continue this negotiation. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, just one comment, not to what Ms. Rosenbloom said, but just that she reminded me of, the one additional issue from, on Millis's side of the equation, if they were to carry the position, is that it would be a union position, because they have a union over there which includes a number of management positions, and they are currently involved in bargaining, so that would be something that they would have to then bargain with the union. So, it's not a clear path on either side. So, I will pursue the, the other options and, and vet those options before this comes back before the board so that you can have a full picture as to, you know, next steps.
With the recommendation from the EDC, if they're able and want to give one-
Yes.
-I think that would be helpful.
Yes, okay.
And I would just like to, to second something that Mr. Kalinda said as well. This was really an innovative process, Mr. Purple, that you put together to try to find a way to do this, so I thank you for thinking outside the box on that, and we'll just move forward and see where we go. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Chairman's report. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I wrote it, but I didn't say it. I am going to table the discussion of Town Council opinion on appointing authority for recreation employees. I had spoken to the Chair of Recreation. We had put this on the agenda because this has been hanging out there for a while, and unfortunately, no one from Recreation could attend the meeting tonight, which I think it's imperative that they're here for the discussion. So, I apologize for that. I wrote "tabled" but didn't actually table it. So, thank you. Chairman's report. As we closed 2018 in the first half of my term as Chair, I've decided to use this opportunity to look back at this year and all of the positive things that have happened. Some may not have been as public or received the accolades it deserved. Mr. Purple reached out to the department heads on my behalf to give them the opportunity to share some of the goals, accomplishments, or success stories achieved. I was so pleased at the response, you can see, by anyone that can see this wonderful stack of papers. I debated on summarizing the list, but decided after reading them, there was no way to do that without taking away from all they represent. And ten minutes at the end of our last meeting of 2018 seemed rather fitting to end the year on a positive note. So, if I may. From Karina Quinn from the Planning Department, some of their initiatives for 2018 were an open space inspections and monitoring pilot program. Planning worked with Mass Autobahn on a pilot program to establish a monitoring process of the town's open space areas for compliance with planning approvals. The deed research database was utilized for open space information, and a short open space monitoring report form was created. The form is both self-explanatory and easy to use, can be prepared in the office and completed with a field inspection. The report is divided into six sections: property identification, open space requirements, site conditions, photos, maps, and notes of open space areas in town. A sample of five locations from a variety of developments was designated, with designated open space areas were selected. Specific location monitoring forms were populated with information, followed by field inspections performed by Mass Autobahn. After presenting the information to the Planning Board and receiving feedback from the Open Space Preservation Commission, Mass Autobahn prepared a summary report of this initial phase of the program and incorporated suggestions for a final monitoring form. Pending available funding, the next phase will be determined, will be determined and ongoing schedule for the process. Tasking of operations continue to establish base monitoring reports and establish a monitor, mitigation approach for non-compliance with open space restrictions. Secondly, a site plan process study. Planning worked with Barrett Planning Group LLC to complete a study of the site plan process of eight other towns comparable to Southborough. The study provided findings and details, similarities and differences in how towns manage site plan review, as well as differences in the site plan bylaws and Planning Board regulations. Site plan process data sheets were completed for the designated towns, and decisions from a three-year period were viewed, which culminated in a spreadsheet of information including number of site plan decisions, timeline, staffing decision process, granting authorities, appeal process, permit laps, times, procedures for filing, and modifications. Basically, the site plan process from start to finish. The goal was to provide the Planning Board with insight into other local procedures, effectiveness, and using this information to enhance Southborough's process. From the Facilities Department, number one was completed various building weatherization projects funded by the $250,000 grant, Green Communities grant that was awarded to the town during the 2018 competitive grant cycle. These projects were performed in the Neary, Trotire, and Finn schools. In addition to these weatherization projects, grant funding was also used for a premium efficient motor replacement and the installation of a variable frequency drive on the air handler at the Southborough Library. The benefits associated with these projects include a reduction in energy consumption, improved building occupant comfort levels, and projected annual savings of $14,374.11. Second, installed automated external defibrillator, AED, devices in the Town Hall Library, Quarterville Hall, DPW, and South Union Buildings. Training on the proper use of these devices was offered to employees. Hired an engineering firm to study the issue of water infiltration at the lower level of the library. Installed underground electrical conduit that will be needed for the future installation of an emergency generator at Town Hall, and remodeled various offices within Town Hall, Quarterville Hall, and South Union Building. From Tom LaFlamme from IT. Issued email accounts to fifty-five boards and committee members. This was the first phase of a multi-year plan to provide all boards and committee members with a town email account for conducting official business. Installation of the first segments of a private fiber network. This project was approved at the town meeting, was originally intended to simply replace the leased connection between Quarterville Hall and the townhouse. However, through the bidding process, it became possible to include the library and the new public safety building to be connected upon completion of construction. This project has improved the connection between the three active buildings and reduced the monthly operating expenses by over $500 each month. Implementation of a new online permitting system. The Building Department went online in October, and the Fire Department will be online in late December, early January. The plan is to continue to incorporate additional departments in the coming months and years. Migration of external websites. As part of the long-term goals of the Technology Department, three externally-hosted websites were migrated to the town's official site, southburrowtown.com. This included the Trails Committee, Advisory Committee, and the Police Department. From Chief Paulus from the Police Department. In January, the Business Resource Officers conducted another round of in-person meetings and survey letters. In February, we were given our certification award from MPAC, the second step in the accreditation process. February fifteenth, Special Olympics Polar Plunge participation by Officers Nichols and Woodford at Trotire Middle School. February eighteenth, Mass, Blue Mass at St. Matthews, conducted by our police chaplain, Father James Flynn. April third, school safety forum meeting at Algonquin High School. May eighth, info sessions on laws and bylaws conducted at the Senior Center for the holders of town alcohol licenses. May twenty-second, Special Olympic events and awards ceremonies attended by multiple department members in Marlboro. June twenty-third, Officer Landry conducted a ninety-minute workshop on personal safety techniques on armed active intruder for citizens at Trotire Middle School. July, took part in the Borough's Youth Police Academy. September, participated in the Jimmy Fund Walk. October, Pink Patch Project raised almost $4,000 for Breast Cancer Awareness Month through the work of Patrolman, Patrolman John Officer and the Police Union. October, participated in Coffee with a Cop Day. October, Officer Richardson graduates from Dare Certification School. He will start the fifth grade program in January. Officer Landry will take over newly expanded seventh grade program. October twenty-fourth, awarded full accreditation status by MPAC. October twenty-seventh, announced participation through a grant in the Borough's Jail Divergent Program focusing on increased training and work with a dedicated clinician for the mentally ill. And December eighteen, conducted a toy drive for ill children at Tufts Floating Hospital. The Senior Center wanted to give thanks to the Southborough Community Fund for providing funding for the Senior Center's Caregivers Meal Support Program for those full-time caregivers who work so hard to support their spouse or parent. This is the third year of the program, and this year they increased the funding to cover additional households. From the Library, one from Ryan Donovan, the director. One event, probably the biggest undertaking I delved into in 2018, was the revamped Strawberry Social 2.0. This event could not have happened without Diana Trembley, who along with her daughter Michelle, provided the actual strawberries for it. Chestnut Hill flooded two days before they were going to donate their stock to us. New trustee, Kim Reagan, was on-site with me all day, and if she wasn't helping me manage the fifteen volunteers throughout the day, I don't know what I would have done. This event got surprisingly no media attention at all, but over 200 people showed up for it. Speaking of new traditions, we also held a competitive Gingerbread House event in early December that the media did cover. This event was hosted by Mandy Roberts, a craft programmer, excuse me, we've been working with since 2015. It was a messy but also resounding creative success. This event is hopefully the first of many to reach an older tween demographic of kids who age out of our children's room programming, who stop coming to the library on a regular basis as teenagers. We're trying to provide more interesting and dynamic programs for them moving forward. There's been a lot of requests to do this again next year. I don't think we cannot not do it. I will say also, we also did a pilot ballroom dancing session, and we're hoping to- and we're hoping to expand this program this summer with SCAC funding assistance. I will say the best thing we did in the past year was hire Aileen. She is fantastic as the library's new Assistant Director. If you say one great thing about the library, please say that. She has infused passion and professional enthusiasm for me and the rest of the library's staff. She's going to bring our teen services to where they need to be in the next few years. It's amazing to note that she hasn't even been here six months yet. It feels like longer in the best possible way. She has made a positive impact on the Southborough Library, and then it should be noted on the official record. And lastly, from Kim Ivors from the library as well. Despite the flooding in September, the library was still able to pull, to pull of small and large-scale programming for children. Regular storytimes and baby toddler groups continued using space in the young adult area upstairs. However, given the space limitations, the most successful programming accomplishments were the big holiday parties, Halloween and Christmas tree decorating party. Fay School was very generous in providing space for the Halloween party, and we were able to combine our craft game Halloween Storytime with Fay's Halloween Parade, though due to weather, their outside event had to be canceled. We had over two hundred twenty children and families, and the event went so well that we have discussed partnering again next year. We also held our annual Christmas tree decorating party on the same day as Santa arriving by helicopter as we always do. I was not sure of how attendance would be due to the fact that the children's collection is currently so limited, but with almost two hundred children and their parents here to decorate the tree, it was one of our best-attended library decor, Chris, sorry, Christmas decorating parties ever. We very much appreciate the support of the Friends of the Southborough Library by providing refreshments at this event, as well as purchasing a new Christmas tree for the library to replace the previous one that was falling apart. Although the library flood was certainly an upsetting and major event for both library's staff and the community, one very positive thing came out of it. The children's room staff is now working alongside the upstairs adult section staff while the renovations are taking place downstairs. I cannot say enough about how accommodating the staff members have been from making space for children's items to helping us with our own space needs. There are a lot of us currently working in a small space, and thanks to the flexibility of the upstairs desk staff, this has been a wonderful teamwork experience. I truly am enjoying being part of the team. So I just wanted to share their words because, again, so many things happen behind the scenes that we may all not know about, and it's a chance to pay tribute to those within our town departments that do such a marvelous job. So that is my last words on the microphone for 2018. Other than, we'll move to executive session. The board will be entering into executive session per MGL Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-One, Exemption Three, and not returning to open session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation as the Chair declares that an open meeting may be, have a detrimental effect, excuse me, on the negotiating position of the public body. Brascio, aye?
Aye.
Shea, aye.
Kalinda, aye.
Jennifer.
Thank you.